Mr. Chair, we're ready.
All right, thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please, if we would stand for a moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is as follows. Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Madam Parker, if we can have the roll call, please.
Mr. J.D. Girardi, Mr. Christopher Paul.
Here.
Mr. John Moody.
Here.
Mr. Matthew Miles.
Here.
Mr. Eric Collins.
Here.
Mr. Richard Nello.
Here.
Chairman Charles Gray.
Here.
Thank you.
And if you could read proof of publication, please.
The items are advertised as an affidavit on February 21st, 2024, March 20th, 2024, and May 2nd, 2020, 2024, or by affidavit of certified mailings inside the office.
All right, thank you. And the minutes, we need the approval of the minutes, please, I think there are two.
Motion to approve?
Second. So we have a motion to approve the minutes of...
March 21st and May 2nd.
Yes, March 21st and May 2nd, we have a second. Any further discussion of that motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Okay. So I'd like to welcome anyone here today for the first time for the Planning Commission and appointed by the County Commission. We meet twice monthly. We serve as a local planning agency and we hold public hearings and transmit to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, Land Development Code amendments, rezoning and conditional use requests. The Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. If anyone's in opposition to any comprehensive plan amendment, Land Development Code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission transmits a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it's appropriate for you to attend the appropriate County Commission meeting. We have those dates available if you don't know what they are. For those of you who are not familiar with the format of the meetings, they are as follows. We have three sections, continuances, consent, and regular items. We may have items on today's agenda that are requested and suggested for consent either by the staff or the applicant. It's been our custom to approve requests for continuance unless they're extenuating circumstances. And then we have consent items, those are items where we've not received any letters or notice of objections to the application. And those items will come up, we'll go through those one at a time. If there's something on consent that you'd like to have heard today or should be spoken about, raise your hand, we'll pull up from consent, and we'll add it to the regular items. Those are the items that are not placed on consent or not continued and will be fully heard today. Applicants will have three minutes to make their presentation and questioners will have three minutes to ask their questions if they have any. And then the applicant will have an opportunity to come back up and try to answer any questions that were raised. If there's been a request at least 24 hours before this meeting in writing for additional time, that time may be granted, and I don't think we have any requests, or do we?
We do, Mr. Chair, for item P.C. 8, you have granted 15, I'm sorry, 20 minutes of time.
Okay. All right, good. All right, so... This is a good time, before we start the meeting, to, if you have your phone with your, some device that makes noise, please put it on the silent position so that we don't interrupt the speakers. And before the, before we start the meeting, I'd like to give anyone here that's here to speak on something not on today's agenda to come up and tell us what you're here to speak about, listen to it, see if we can help you. Is there anyone here to speak on something not on today's agenda? Okay. That being said, what I'd like to do is, anyone who does plan to come speak, whether you're an applicant or attendee, please stand and raise your right hand if you plan to speak. We're gonna swear you in.
Do you swear or affirm that this is what you're...
I can't hear you.
Do you swear or affirm that this is what you're about to give the truth to help you out?
Uh, excuse me, sir. We wanted you to stand and raise your right hand when you take that test money.
I can't hear you.
Do you swear and affirm that you...
Yes, I have.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. You can. All right, you know what you just swore to? I said, do you know what you just swore to?
Oh, I heard that, yeah. I was sure, but then I can't hear you when you were talking.
Oh, okay. All right, does anybody, everybody hear me now? Anybody that can't hear me, raise your hand, let me know that you just heard me say you can't hear me.
I can hear you.
The, my boss there in the blue shirt said, turn it up. Okay, we'll do the best we can.
There you go. That's good.
Thank you. Okay. So I think we're ready.
Ready?
Thank you, Ms. Denise.
Yes, sounds good. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Economic Growth. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission members. I'm gonna start with item P.C. 3, that is P.E.G. 247764. It's a zoning amendment, 301 East MPUD, 301 East LLC. The request is to continue the item to a date uncertain.
Okay, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Okay. Uh, let's go to the next one.
Following item is P.C. 4, that is P.E.G. 247694, zoning amendment, the name of S.R. 54 and Lake Crystal MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development, Interstate Homes LLC and others. The request is to continue the item to a date uncertain.
All right, is the applicant present on this one? Is there anyone here to speak on this one? Does he know one? Okay, continue.
Did you want to put on the continuances? You want me to continue?
Let's just go, let's do all the continuances at once.
That, that's the last continuance.
Okay. Very good.
Move to continue items P.C. 3 and P.C. 4 to dates uncertain.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion of that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Okay, motion carries.
Following item is item P.C. 5, which is P.E.G. 247791, zoning amendment, Rubreck Ronald C. and Pat C. M. Living Trust. It's for a change in zoning from an MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development District, to an A.C. Agricultural District. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
All right, is the applicant present?
The applicant is virtually present.
Okay. Is there anyone here to ask questions?
And for the record, I have no one signed up to speak on this item on WebEx.
All right. Would the applicant like to say anything, add anything to the discussion? Create a discussion? Can you hear us?
You should have Mr. Rubreck and Mr. Colin Rice on this item.
Okay. Did I hear something?
We're getting some...
Yes, Mr. Rice, I hear you.
I'm only here to answer any questions to the speakers for today.
All right, do you have anything to add to the application that we don't know about?
No, we're just, we're putting it back to A.C., which is how it had historically been, zones, we're undoing the MPUD, that's all.
Okay. Very good, any questions from the dice? If not, now your motion. No, let's just get, get one at a time.
Motion to approve P.C. 5?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
We're gonna move on to item P.C. 6, which is P.E.G. 247775. It's a zoning amendment in the names of Thomas Lee and Kimberly Ann Salmonek, for changing zoning from an A.R. Agricultural Residential District to a C2 General Commercial District with the deed restriction related to the Live Local Act. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
Okay, is the applicant present? Okay, anyone here to object? Seen objections? In that case, do I hear a motion?
Uh, motion approved, P.C. 6.
You have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, now motion carries.
Mr. Chair, we're gonna move on to item, P.C. 7 and P.C. 8 will both be pulled from consent. Actually, P.C. 8 is already on regular, it just didn't show up on your agenda.
I'm sorry, what did you say? I didn't miss that first part.
We're pulling P.C. 7 from consent.
Okay.
So P.E.G. 247683 will be pulled and P.C. 8 is showing on the actual agenda as consent, but when you look at the agenda memo, it's on regular. So we're gonna move on to item P.C. 9, and on this item, you are sitting as the L.P.A., as a local planning agency. And that item is P.E.G. 240301, it's a comprehensive plan amendment, C-PAS 2404, Ed's Food Truck Park. It's for a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use maps 2-15 and Sheet 22, changing from RES 6, residential six dwelling units per gross acre, to COM commercial on .71 acre of property, which is located on the south side of State Route 54, approximately 200 feet west of Shelley Lane. There are a couple of corrections that are, need to be made to the agenda memo. In the general information section, that talks about the project address, that address should actually be to, both 29504 State Route 54 and 29512 State Route 54. And then on the references section, which is Page 6 of 6, we need to include under the future land use, under the terms to reference RES 6 as well as COM on, in the appendix. So with those changes, which will be provided to the clerk's office, we ask that you please take public comment on this item and that you find the item consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners. And again, you're sitting as a local planning agency on this item.
Is there anyone here to speak on P.C. 9?
Which piece of, uh, you're talking, I'm concerned, man, if you're talking to that little thing, I can't understand you.
This property is on the south side of State Route 54, approximately 200 feet west of Shelley Lane.
Do we have a map?
Shelley and Benjamin, yeah, can you put on the map, please?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's right near Shelley and Benjamin.
Is that the one you'd like to speak on?
It's in the industry of...
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, so that will be pulled as well.
Okay.
So we're gonna move on to item P.C. 7 for presentation. And that will be, Mr. Jacob Gates will be presenting the item.
Okay, I just say it's clear, we're coming back to P.C. 9 later. Okay, so you'll get a chance to speak. Okay. We're back, we're on P.C. 7.
Good afternoon, gentlemen of the Planning Commission. This is deja vu. Once again, the Crossways MPUD is here to be presented on June 6, 24, 2024, Dade City Planning Commission. There have been some substantial changes since the last time this was presented on October 5th of 2023. Thank you. Thank you very much. Basic overview is similar, the biggest changes are to utilities and the size of the development itself in terms of entitlements. Zoning amendment from A.C. Agricultural District to the MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development District. The future land use is ROR for a small sliver parcel to the north, and most of the MPUD is R6. The purpose is to allow up to 130 single-family detached dwelling units on 29 and a half acres. And there is a secondary option that I will be elaborating on later. The location is to the northeast of U.S. Highway 98 and west of Old Lakeland Highway. This is the generalized location, just to the southwest of us currently. And this is a context map. The nearest MPUD is the Triple J MPUD to the southwest.
Jacob, before you leave this slide, can I ask you, where is this MPUD in relation to the Cherry Hill MPUD that went to the board?
It's more than, I would say more than 10 miles away.
Okay.
Yes. To the east, the southeast of the Cherry Hills MPUD. This is the standard location map of an area. We have the current zoning district. The future land use, you can see the ROR sliver at the top. This is the master plan oriented north first because standard, it's red in a different direction, just so you can see how it relates to the location map. And this is the master plan as it's read. There have been several notes on the master plan. You will note the change in entitlements, you will note the change in the notes box, and the change in the note that the access points will meet the intent of the code.
Can you go over what those changes are?
I sure can, absolutely. So, the applicant reduced the proposed units in response to the Planning Commission's concerns and comments on October 5th, 2023. The density would have been 5.96. If you recall, the maximum amount allowed in the previous version of this MPUD was 176 dwelling units. Now, the maximum allowed amount is 130 units. That would reduce the density from 5.96 dwelling units per acre to 4.4 dwelling units per acre for option A. And option B, which I will show in the next slide, is 1.3 dwelling units per acre. They both fall under the maximum density allowed by the project's future land use classifications, which could have allowed the 176 units back in October.
Is there any note about a wall or a fence? I think we had a discussion.
There, there is, there's a condition of approval for the fence, or excuse me, the wall.
Is that on this plan?
Yes, I'll find the specific one here. It's condition of approval number 58. I'll read it out loud for the record. Developers agreed to install an eight-foot-tall masonry wall bordering the southern side of the MPUD, specifically the northern, western sides of parcel number 182522000003000080, and the western side of parcel number 8, excuse me, 182522000003000070. The masonry wall shall be constructed prior to first record plat approval. Required landscaping shall be on the side facing the wall away from the MPUD. So, Mr. Hall, who owns the property to the south, who is here today, will have the landscaping facing his property so he's not staring at any football.
Okay.
Uh, next slide. So this is to illustrate the different entitlements that the applicant could choose to pursue given market conditions. The first unit is pursue 75 40-foot-wide, single-family detached lots and 75 50-foot-wide, single-family detached lots for 130 residential units total, 4.4 dwelling units per acre. And option B is pursue half-acre-sized lots for the single-family detached lots, which would be 40 units total, which would be 1.35 dwelling units per acre. And the terms of MPUD are such that, based on market conditions, the applicant could choose to pursue either A or B at their discretion. I will also illustrate one of the reasons why the disparity is so different and why it's specifically half-acre lots.
Clear me up one. Says 40-foot-wide, 75 units, 50-foot-wide, 75 units, total 130, but 75 and 75 is 150.
Excuse me, that's a typo, it's 65.
Okay.
My mistake.
Jacob, just to back up.
Yes.
You said it was at their option, but the way I read the conditions, if they don't get access to county utilities, it's not really at their option.
Yes, that's...
They, they can't build 130 units unless they have access to county...
That's, that's correct.
Mr. Jacob just say it's at their option.
Correct, that's, that's the...
Okay.
If I remember this correctly, and I'm sorry, because this is October or whatever we heard.
Yes, sir.
It wasn't that they didn't have access to the utilities, it was, it was a long way away.
Correct. Right, well, the agenda memo says that they're not, our utility department is not confident they're willing to provide utility service to the site. So, I'm only just trying to correct the record because Jacob said it was at their option and I, that's not exactly what it says.
All right, I'm sorry, so I'm confused, so now utilities is saying that they don't have capacity?
They're not saying they don't have capacity, at least the way I read the memo and Jacob's can elaborate on this. They're not sure whether they're willing to provide water and sewer service to the site.
That and the option where they would have to connect to Pasco County Water and Sewer is option A. Because there's no way we could allow 130 units with septic and well-serving each unit. However, the half-acre option allows them to pursue well and septic for their utilities on each of the residential lots.
So, option A really is subject to getting sewer and water.
Exactly.
It's not really an option, it's subject to it.
Yeah, option B is if they can't connect.
Yes.
Is there any kind of time limit on that?
Yeah, it's, yeah, you're gonna ask the same thing, yep.
This, it's the standard six years because we have, there's no way to tell the future if in six years or a handful of years, lines may improve and it may be more feasible to connect to Pasco Water and Sewer. That's why we left option A on the table, just in case things improve in that time period.
So Pasco County Utilities is not committing to provide capacity at the site currently?
Not at this time.
Okay.
But we left language and the conditions of approval and we communicated with...
But doesn't the MPUD expire after six years?
It does, it's up to them if they want to extend the expiration date or if they want to pursue utilities from Pasco County Water and Sewer just before the six-year mark, say five years, four years, there's no telling what the capacity may be.
I want to be clear about the expiration date. Every time the governor declares state emergency in the state of Florida, those durerates, durations get extended by six months plus the duration of the state of emergency. So, it's not uncommon for MPDs to get multiple state of emergency extensions.
Right, I understand that, I just, I don't know that he answered the, maybe he did answer the question, maybe I didn't understand the answer. Is there a drop-dead date by which they have to decide, I'm either gonna pursue sewer or I'm gonna pursue septic, one or, one or the other?
The, the drop-dead date is the expiration of the MPUD. So, the, the, the subtext is that if they want to build sooner, they will have to pursue option B. So, it's up to their discretion in the long term if they want to pursue option A or option B. But in order to pursue faster, they would have to choose option B because as of right now, after communication with Mr. Adolfo Gonzalez, Pasco County Utilities, they're not confident that they would be willing to provide water for this project.
Is there a reason they're not willing?
So, the nearest utility line is actually a well that's deep and serves the residential neighborhood... and serves the residential neighborhood is to the south of the total beverage destruction and the industrial business, the south of this MPUD. The concern is that they may not be able to reach it to this project and be able to serve with that well in particular. However.
Okay, so there's a question of capacity?
Yes, it's a question of capacity, but it's not necessarily that they don't have capacity. They're just trying to preserve the, the system as it stands.
If, if you don't mind, there is someone here from Utilities who may be able to answer the question. Mr. Atef Hannah is here.
Thank you, Denise. Atef Hannah with Pasco County Utilities. It's actually capacity more than anything. The line on, uh, the line is, the water line is connected to the sunburst wells, which is at the capacity. So, we cannot provide anymore.
Okay, so it is a capacity.
It is a capacity.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, just to be clear, do you, where is the closest line where you have capacity?
This area of the county has actually, it's not connected to Tampa Bay Water. So, they're all wells and most of these wells actually are serving their intended customers at this point. They cannot take on more.
Okay, well, presumably there's some line, is it 50 miles away? Where's the closest line that is served by Tampa Bay Water?
That would be, we're talking about closer to, we would go probably 56 and it's way west of this area. 56 and we'll say.
10 miles or more.
Island and area.
A long way away.
Yeah, a long, long way.
Well, is that also where the nearest wastewater collection point would be?
It's far from the wastewater.
Yeah. Well, can you, sorry, just hypothetically, and I realize it's probably unlikely, but hypothetically, if the developer were willing to extend the water lines from the 56 Island Boulevard area, would you then agree to provide service? If it was at their cost?
I mean, it's like, it's, it's not a way to get there. It's, anything is possible. That's why if you leave it open, it's fine. But I, I would say it's really far from.
Okay.
The central water.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jacob, not, not taking off subject, but can Triple J is just as south here? Can somebody kind of refresh us on the entitlements and the?
Yes.
If there is a timeline on, on that one that we're aware of?
Yeah, there, there is some information about this one in particular. To the west, Triple J Ranch, uh, RZ 6647 is unexpired. It was approved prior to the implementation in February 2008 of the six-year standard expiration date, so it's unexpired at this time. Uh, it was approved for 636 dwelling units on November 8th, 2006. However, that has not been, it has not been touched since that time. There has been no extension. There has been no modification. And not to speculate, but I assume one of the issues may be concerns about utilities for Triple J. That makes it prohibitively expensive for them at that time.
Okay, any other questions around?
I got one more. Just want Denise, can you just elaborate on that with the Triple J? Would it ever be, uh, expire?
So, uh, so basically, as Jacob stated, so in, uh, in 2006, which is when Triple J was approved, there was, that we didn't, that particular MPUD did not have a standard condition for expiration. However, I would imagine that in the conditions, there are, there is information regarding for them to do traffic impact study, which that's what happened back then. So, that's probably expired. So, they would have to redo that in order to bring it forward again.
Okay. That, that is correct. We would not allow a traffic impact study from 2006 to, to stand. It's just not feasible. So, so my question is, why do we even, why is option A even on the table when it looks like it's almost impossible to connect? It's, it's on the table because we don't know necessarily during the, the six years from approval by the BCC, hypothetical approval of BCC, to expiration or any extensions therein, if utilities will become easier to obtain. We have no idea what technological advancements. We have no idea what the extensions may be. So, putting it on the table is a just-in-case. It's planning ahead, not to, you know, use it on. But it is planning ahead just in case things may improve to the point that they can actually pursue Pasco County Sewer and Water.
Okay. Any questions from?
Well, Jacob, let me just ask a question. I mean, are they doing it solely so they can invest for, for the 40-foot lots? Is that the real reason they're doing that? I mean, because.
I can't speculate.
Because otherwise, they could just submit an MPD modification or new request whenever they have water and sewer. The only thing they're arguably losing is this kind of potential vesting of 40-foot lots, which I'm not sure the board really wants to see anyway. So, is that the real main reason they're doing that?
I, that has not been said to me to be the real reason they're doing that. I do have in the memo, the agenda memo, that they're technically, because the comments were committed, were entered prior to August 8th, 2023, they're not bound by PM 26, which put, you know, the stop on 40-foot-wide lots in Pasco County unless they meet tons of requirements and then the revision in February that made them even more restrictive. I can't say necessarily that that's the reason they're choosing to pursue the 40-foot, 50-foot option to vest, but it's a possibility. I can't weigh one way or the other.
Feel strongly both ways. He feels very strongly both ways.
It's a plausible reason, I'm sure.
Anything else, David?
I guess one last question. So, does Dade City have any plans to extend water and sewer to this area? Is it in any kind of service area that maybe we need to get you back up to, Atef, I don't, you know whether Dade City has any plans to extend water and sewer to this area?
To my knowledge, I don't believe that they have plans, but I can't speculate one way or the other. When the plans were first entered, uh, they did have Dade City listed as a water provider. However, that changed to Pasco Water, Pasco Sewer. So, it could be that they were talking to Dade City and that they discovered like, well, it's, it's not as feasible for us to connect to them. It might be more feasible to connect to Pasco Water. That's a possibility. I can't speculate the conversations that happen in the background, so.
How far is it from the, um, the utility, joint utility area in Dade City, that agreed area?
Uh, I'm not, I'm not familiar with those lines. Uh, Atef, would you know?
Atef, can you, you're gonna have to come back up. Do you have any questions? Sorry.
Would you be able to back up to the context?
Yes.
Thank you very much. About two miles of Dade. Yeah, two and a quarter. It's about that. Two and a quarter miles. It's about that. It's about two and a quarter miles away.
Is it up on Clinton, I'd take it, or in that? Because I mean, city, Dade City comes all the way down to Townsend Road then?
301, Gulf Bowl.
Okay.
So, it extends up 301 that way and?
It's going to be very difficult to extend their service area, reach to that area, to be honest.
Atef, could you come closer to the mic?
It's gonna be very difficult for the Dade City to actually extend their service area, utility service area, to get to that parcel right here.
Because of the cost of the line extensions or because they have?
The line and they, they have to, I mean, I don't know if it's feasible for them to go beyond all this area to serve this parcel. So, they have to do their due diligence probably to do something like that.
Has Dade City been asked about it at all?
I, I'm not sure because.
Does anybody know that?
The applicant's representative is here, the.
So.
Point out that Dade City also has capacity issues at this moment. So, it's unlikely they're planning on expanding their distribution system when they.
So, even if the lines were called feasible, they have a plant capacity issue?
Right now, they do, yes.
Okay.
And, and there are wastewater issues because of which, uh, is it, uh, shears? Yes, so, but the water, I mean, we probably still some issues to get there too because they're not connected to a Tampa Bay Water that they can get more water as they want.
Yeah, actually, I was looking at Zephyr Hills. It was two and, two and a quarter. So, the Dade City city limits is about a three-quarters of a mile where it extends down.
And I think. But it's also got a utility service agreement area that extends past the city limits right now. But they do have a wastewater capacity issue for sure.
Just because of that city boundary, do we know that there are any lines that extend all the way out there? It looks like it's generally agricultural out in the, the far region.
Yeah, that's just city boundary.
It's just city boundary, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, as, as a general rule, the city's also a little reluctant to extend lines to areas that are not in their city limits. Because they're gonna want tax base if they're gonna extend their lines that far.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a few slides, just in case there's background information, surrounding conditions. If there were questions about right-of-way and the policy notes on AM 26 exemption. However, even though they're not bound by PM 26, they did agree to voluntary architectural controls as well as landscaping standards.
All right. Okay, I think we had one person that wanted to ask a question.
Well, you need to hear from the applicant first.
Okay. Shelley, Shelley Johnson. Do you want to speak now or do you want to wait and see what the questions are?
Um, I just wanted to add two things. Um, I did want to, he just mentioned, we did, they did voluntarily agree to the architectural designs and stuff for PM, even though it didn't apply to them. Um, and then that boundary of Dade City, there are no lines, but that boundary, that annexation boundary, that particular property is the Crosswinds property and Dade City, last week, because I represent that property as well, just approved 2,500 single-family homes and 350,000 square feet of commercial on that property. So, um, it is gonna be a fairly dense property at that, right now, there is no service that we're aware of. And on this particular property, we are looking to, you know, get service from the county. And if that can't happen, then we will, you know, go ahead and go to the half-acre lots, so.
All right.
But I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. If there are questions, then I think, did we have one speaker, one person that wanted to speak?
Yes, we do. Um, we have Mr. Charles Hall.
Mr. Hall, could you just give us your full name and address and you've been sworn, right?
Charles Hall, 10,001 Old Lakeland Highway, Dade City. Thank you for allowing me to express some concerns that I have. Did I, first a clarification, the gentleman from the county, did he say the well, the county well that is in close proximity to crossways is at capacity?
Well, let's get clarification. I, I don't know exactly what he said about that, but if you have to come forward, please.
Atef Hannah again with Pasco County Utilities. Uh, yes, it's, uh, that area is between, I can show you here. This is the Dade City service area and this is the Zephyr Hills service area and the project is right here. It's, uh, it's served, that line right here is served by a well.
There's a well.
It's a large well. It's a, no, it's a, we're talking about a commercial well, a, a large well.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yes.
Right there on 98.
Yes.
There's a huge tank.
Yes.
That is a well.
Yes.
Did you say that is at capacity and they cannot get water from that well?
It's at capacity to serve what is serving right now.
Okay, so, crossways cannot draw water from that well?
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, first thing, the, the development of 130 houses, even the 40 houses, does not fit the rural area that is currently in that location. I know that, I, I know progress is going to occur. When, when they do get the approval, are they going to be required to have in place any mitigating factors for the dust that will be caused by all the construction? We live right, right adjacent to the, the crossways development. I told you that last time. Any mitigation factors in, in place there? And, uh, about the water table? If that many people, uh, if, if that many people are allowed to move in there and our water table drops, what are my options with my well if it drops below my well? And what about sinkholes in the area? Sinkholes are caused when all the water is used and there's a, a, an empty space under the, under the dirt that falls in, correct? My sister who lives adjacent to the crossways development, she's had sinkhole issues twice with her house. And with the septic tanks, is there health issue with that many septic tanks going with the 40 houses? That many septic tanks going in over our water supply? And the last issue I would like to raise is the, and I brought this up at the last meeting in October. That many more cars on Old Lakeland Highway? It, it could be 500, 600 more vehicles a day. And I ask, how's that going to affect our ingress and egress from our property? And their representative said, don't worry about it. They're going to put turn lanes in for their development. How's that going to help me? I don't understand that.
Okay. Well, we'll try to get some answers for you and, uh, if you have any, do you have any other questions?
I just want to be on record with those issues. That's what I can think of right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. When the applicant comes back up, hopefully she was making notes and she can respond to those. Okay, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Not, then we'll have the applicant.
Thank you, Shelley Johnson again, 6400 Madison Street. And I have been sworn. The dust control, there, there'll be permitting requirements that they have to deal with dust mitigation, put salt fencing up and all those things. As far as the number for the well and septic option that's in this MPUD, that was something that we cleared with the utility director. And I believe they have to pull their permits from DEP in order to do wells and those kinds of things. So, that'll be all heavily regulated as well in terms of not impacting other wells and the water table and all that stuff.
All right, and what about traffic?
What's that?
Traffic, yeah, he asked about traffic.
Oh, traffic US 98. They actually did a traffic study for 176 units. But again, they're only doing 130. They actually did a traffic study for 176 units, but again, they're only doing 130, you know, if they can get water and sewer to the site at some point in the next six years. But, you know, it's US 98, so I don't, I don't think there's any huge traffic mitigation. There's a 100-foot of right-of-way, I think that they're being required to dedicate on Old Lakeland Highway on US 98. You know, they'll do access improvements and all the access management studies and all that good stuff when they come in for a site plan, to determine what turn lanes and stuff need to go into the site.
So what level of service would they have on that road then?
I don't know what the level of service, there was no issues though. It didn't trigger any additional mitigation, so, but I'm sure there'll be access mitigation, you know, lanes and stuff.
Are they intending to widen the road there?
Yeah, they're giving 100-foot of right-of-way, I think is what the county asked for under the corridor table along US 98 in front of the property.
Okay. Any other questions? Anybody?
Let me provide a little bit more context. Because I actually spoke to Mr. Hall downstairs before the meeting started.
Okay.
And he expressed the sinkhole issue. 807.4 C5 specifically cites the water table as the Geotek report. So at time of site development permit, they will be required to make note of the water table. And also, if there is an issue with the water table dropping, that Geotek report would keep that to account.
Well, I'll respectfully disagree with that. As somebody who has to submit those reports, no, they don't. It makes note of where the water table is so that we can design stormwater systems and that, but we don't do drawdown analyses for wells and the like. And we've got a geologist here on the board who I think is over here nodding his head that, yeah, that's the case, so.
I understand.
I disagree with you.
If there's any...
I defer to your judgment, Mr. Hall.
John's absolutely correct, yeah. It's not, that's not the intention of the Geotek reports that we do, really, the studies that we do, or generally do support drainage design, stormwater. Understandable, so, yeah.
But any new wells wouldn't need a consumptive use permit, right, from SWF mod?
No, not a residential well. If they were to do a community water supply well, they would, they, well, and that only happens if they exceed a certain diameter, and I think that's once they hit larger than five inches, is when they trip the consumptive use permit requirement. So I don't anticipate anybody's residential well that's at five-inch diameter.
Certainly not.
If they are, they're probably violating these water restrictions.
Can I ask a question about traffic?
Of course.
So Jacob, I do appreciate you including the timing of the phase analysis in the write-up, but I don't see any summary, no conclusion, or if there is, I'm not, I'm missing it. Where would I find the general conclusion about the level of service in this traffic study? Like, when I, typically when I see one from Steve Henry or Mike Razor, there's a conclusion section where it says, "We did the analysis and this is what we concluded." I'm not seeing it in this traffic study. Do you know where I would find it? Or does anybody, are there traffic people online that can tell me where I could find the conclusion?
This is Essen, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I...
We could hear you a minute ago.
I only got the first word, Essen.
Essen, are you still around? What were you, what were you gonna say?
We should hear you, but you're cutting out. Maybe the applicant knows the answer, or I could find the conclusion.
This is, I can respond, Essen, Emma.
Okay.
The development service on the segment of Old Lakeland Highway is LSC, which is better than the T, which is the threshold for the mitigation. Actually, we have no failure of the capacity here.
Okay, and that's with the project traffic?
Yes, actually, the project traffic impact is not significant. The impact is just only one PUP number on the segment on the side of the US, in the Old Lakeland Highway.
Amir, where could I find this information in the traffic study?
Do you have the traffic study or no?
For me?
The, for context, Amir. Amir, I actually have the traffic study in front of me. The applicant was kind enough to bring it up. Page nine, six conclusions. It says in the last sentence, "Study area links and area sections have been determined to operate at acceptable levels of service with and without project traffic."
Okay, maybe I have a different version, or maybe I'm still looking.
There is, it's in our version too, in the...
Okay.
It's on page eight, has a table four for peak hour LOS.
I'll find it. Go ahead. I believe you. Thank you.
Okay. All right, anything else?
If you have any other questions, please don't hesitate to...
All right, thank you. John, anybody there?
I guess the only issue I still have is the 40-foot lots. I mean, I understand that this predates the PM 26, but we know the direction of the board is to go away from 40-foot lots and go to 50-foot lots. You know, especially in this situation where it's a slim and none chance that we're gonna be able to connect to utilities. That may happen in six years, sure, but, you know, I'm still a crazy about the idea of the 40-foot lots. It almost feels like, like what was mentioned before, that this is just an attempt to get this approved in order to take advantage of being gratified in from the 40-foot lots. I guess that's probably the only issue I have with it. I'd be more inclined to vote for all 50-foot lots for option A.
To win a option A?
Well...
And just leave option B as the sole?
That would, that would be even more ideal, in my opinion, but if we were gonna leave option A on the table, I'd like to see it all be 50-foot lots, just because that's the direction of the BCC and has been that way since 2023.
Shelley, would the applicant be amenable to removing the option for 40-foot lots and instead doing all 50-foot lots for option A? She's, she's talking to the applicant right now.
Matt, do you have any questions you want to teach?
Yeah, I think if we're, if we're planning for the unknown, looking at condition 30, that they can construct septic tanks if Pasco County Utilities declines a connection, I'd like to see that include Dade City, not knowing what Dade City might do in the next six years. They're slated to build a new wastewater plant, who knows how they grow. If that would be an or Dade City, I think I'd always look for any opportunity we can to avoid. Or septic tanks, there's been millions of dollars around the state to get rid of them now, so.
We can definitely revise conditions of approval with the consent of the applicant to also seek out Dade City or Zephyr Hills as an option.
What would the density, if we were with 50-foot lots in there, what would the result in density be at that point?
Beg your pardon?
All 50-foot lots, what would the result in density be at that? I mean, what are we, we're talking about...
At 50-foot lots, it would be actually fewer than the 130 units. So it'd probably fall under, let's see, 120? Yeah, it's, it'd probably be about 120, 200, 10, yeah. And it'd be less than three units per acre.
I still struggle with that amount of density in this, in this area, regardless of what Dade City just approved, just to the north, what would that be, northwest of this area? I just, I tend to side with Mr. Hall on the rural nature of this, this area, and putting that much density in this area, regardless of whether it's option A or option B, I just, I still, I still struggle with that, honestly, on this project.
I'm struggling with that you want to have your cake and you want to eat it too. That there's an option on the table.
Yeah.
I feel like you gotta choose one or the other. And in this case, it doesn't sound like water and sewer is a feasible option, maybe it is one in the future.
But you can always, you can always get a modification at that point, or seek a modification.
They can.
At that point, the modification would be, wouldn't allow the 40-foot lots to be done.
Well, to go well and septic, they'd have to have a minimum of a half-acre lots, which that's all the density problem, for sure. But are there, I'm sorry, because I've been having trouble accessing the internet up here. The other day, I listened to the board discussion on Cherry Hill, which basically the same proposal was being made. I even think we're at the same developer, aren't we? But that is correct. It was a, it was an either-or situation, and what I heard, at least I thought I heard, was that there was some hesitancy on the board to approve something if they didn't know water and sewer was going to be available to the property. And I think in that case, didn't they ultimately vote to continue the thing basically indefinitely?
Yes.
You know, I mean...
That's correct.
There was, what I was trying to find, and I'm referring to the internet access, David, was Jeff Stein Snyder indicated to the board when it was time to consider motions, he cited a comp plan policy regarding utilities, and I'm not able to...
Hand to land development code for reasons.
Can you tell us what those are?
Yes, I can.
I believe it's policy eight, policy water eight point one.
Yeah, those aren't the ones that he cited, I'll give you the ones that he cited.
Because technically, under the comprehensive plan, Pasco Utilities was, the applicant was required to connect to Pasco Utilities. However, Adolfo Gonzalez cited a different aspect of the comp plan citing, you know, the capacity issues that Mr. Atav Hand previously mentioned.
Yeah, and from my own perspective, I'm fine if utilities can't serve, whether there's a willingness or a capacity problem, and I believe it's more a capacity problem, whether there's not an ability to serve, then you can't entitle something to the maximum possible density at 40-foot wide lots. Unfortunately, your choice is half-acre lots and wells and septic tanks. And I feel like you gotta make a choice. You want this, you want that, you want...
So...
Otherwise, stick with your Euclid, or come in and ask for a Euclidian zoning district. You're asking for an MPUD, you're asking for an entitlement, but you can't tell us exactly what entitlement you want. Well, I might want this entitlement, and I might want that entitlement. That would be a circus if every developer came in here and asked for entitlements in an either-or situation. Today, it's two choices, and the next guy could come in and say, "Well, I got five options I want to present."
This, this is an alternative to a loom.
Well, let's get back to what David has to say.
So to answer your question, Mr. Stein Snyder cited three things. Two provisions on the land development code, one is 402.1 E13, and that requires you to evaluate whether there's adequate public facilities serving the site, including water and sewer facilities. And 402.2 F2, which also requires you to evaluate the adequacy of existing public services, including utilities. And then he also cited comp plan policy 1.10.1, which is your general compatibility policy, which among other issues, including compatibility of the land use, requires you to evaluate the appropriate timing of the proposal based on public facilities, including water and sewer facilities.
Okay, well, I mean, if, if I can just read the flavor of the board, I think what we're coming up against is either you're gonna go with one or the other, or you're gonna get a denial. So I'm just thinking it makes more sense, and then you can, if things change in the future, they come back and change it if they haven't developed it.
That's what it would seem like to me. I mean, if I were in the applicant's place, I'd take my water, I'd take my well and septic today, and I can always come back and ask for an MPUD modification or a new MPUD if water and sewer should miraculously become available out in this area at some point in the future. If you get denied, you're back with the existing zoning that you got.
So, I mean, I'm just telling you what I think the board might go with, rather than go and get a denial.
Option A is removed.
Just take option A out of there, and you'd probably be okay. Probably.
Thank you, Shelley Johnson again, 6,400 Madison Street. I have been sworn, I'm applicant's representative. They're fine with doing the septic and the well, so we'll just agree to that option.
Okay.
If that helps.
Thank you, Shelley. All right, so if there are no more questions, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
I don't think there are any more questions. And so if there are no more questions, can I hear a motion, please?
I move approval PC seven with removal of option A, first option. I'm just limiting it to 40 units on half-acre lots.
So that's also gonna require a number of commission, conditions to be amended or correct?
The associated conditions.
I'll second for discussion purposes.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second for discussion?
So the discussion I want to have is, this is the problem that I see with the either-or proposal. A master plan was submitted based on 40 and 50-foot wide lots, and now we're talking about an approval of half-acre lots to accommodate well and septic. And to David's point, now we have a variety of conditions. Is there a second master plan to address this?
Me?
Half-acre lot situation?
So during the negotiation process, they agreed to utilize the same layout and stormwater mitigation and have a park regardless of if they chose option A or option B.
Right. But what I'm getting at, and then just going forward in the future, and I'll leave it to the county attorney to fix whatever conditions we need to fix here, but...
Thanks, right.
It would seem to me, if you're gonna come here and we're gonna have option A, option B, option C, then you've got to come here with a set of conditions that address each option, a master plan that addresses each option, and... But David, if you can guide us with those things, I would appreciate it.
It's gonna be very difficult for me to, on the fly, tell you every condition that would need to be removed or amended, but, I mean, there could be many. For example, even our architectural requirements typically would not apply to half-acre lots. So, and there's a number of conditions dealing with architectural requirements. Their mobility plan, I don't know if it's gonna still be the same with 40 half-acre lots, so...
Would it be better?
Can I make a suggestion, in light of the fact that it appears as though you really didn't have any intention of immediately developing the property? Why don't we just continue it to the next meeting here? Give it, give David a chance to, you know, to go over it with you, Shelley, and make sure we have the appropriate changes to the conditions?
I agree with all of that.
And then vote on it at that time, if that won't cause too much heartache for your client. And we want to be reasonable, but we want to be thorough.
I mean, we'd rather not get continued, because we've been continued once already. I mean, I would hope that maybe in between here and now, we could address some of those conditions with regards to architectural designs that wouldn't be applicable. My client did agree that regardless of which design we were going with A or B, that they would agree to these conditions, but, you know, if we're definitely going with B, I don't know if there's someone we can work through that as we, you know, I know there's different things like homeowners association.
Do you think they get ironed out before the BCC?
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be that hard, they're pretty obvious which ones probably would not really should be applicable.
You think you can do that before the BCC?
It's really the applicant staff that have to do this, and, I mean, a lot of standards need to change. I'm just quickly looking through here.
Architectural design?
More so to staff, I would...
Just for instance, if they have half-acre lots, is there a, I think our R2 zoning district would be something similar, is that right, or R1 lots?
Half-acre lots is usually R1.
Okay, so...
Which is 20,000 square foot lots, it's a little bit less.
All right, but if we were in the R1 Euclidian district, there would still be minimum lot widths, minimum setbacks. The conditions aren't set up to address those things, is what I'm getting at.
They are. They're, if you go to condition number 37, we actually utilize the...
There are standards for the half-acre lots, but you'd have to pull out all of the standards for the 40 and 50-foot lots.
Yes.
I mean, I just haven't, I can't tell you sitting here today every single condition that would need to be potentially amended, but if you continue it, or even in theory, I don't know when this is scheduled to go to the board. But if you continue it, or even in theory, I don't know when this is scheduled to go to the board.
Seven-nine.
And when is your agenda deadline for seven-nine?
I believe that is six-eighteen or six-nineteen.
And do you, Jacob, do you think that-
Yes.
I guess I'm asking you and Mr. Pito's, do you think you can modify all this and make that agenda deadline?
Yes, sir. I was marking it up as we speak.
Sounds like you've been on top of it.
I have.
That's less than-
Sounds like you were prepared for this outcome.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Well, I wanted to allow as many options as possible for the applicant, and also allow the opportunity for the PC to comment.
Personally, I appreciate the way you handled it. You've done a good job.
Thanks, sir.
So, it sounds like staff was able to amend the conditions or remove and modify the conditions as necessary to implement the motion, so it's really up to the, it's up to the planning commission about whether you want to try to move it forward or continue it so you can see all of the amended conditions. I can't tell you what to do, you all need to decide.
So you want to modify your motion?
To continue it or to?
Well-
I mean, you can either recommend approval with the removal of option A and direct staff to amend all the conditions related to option A.
That was my thought.
Okay, so, so that's your motion. Did we get a second to that one?
Yes, I seconded it for discussion.
So that's your motion.
Okay.
You all probably need to act on that motion.
If I could just make one clarification before we do that, does conditional item thirty remain? They still got to verify they can't get a connection before they do wells and septic?
I'm sorry to interrupt. What was the question again?
So, does conditional item thirty remain, they've got to confirm they can't get a utilities connection before they construct wells and septic?
I think that-
That would be one that would-
I think that condition twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty all need to be reevaluated in line of the motion. Because I think we're talking about only doing well in septic, so most of, a lot of what's in, even condition thirty said that twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-nine don't apply if they're doing well in septic, so.
And I'm just thinking that if, it's still the idea, is this wasn't going to happen for a while. If there's utilities out there, even if it's just forty houses, do you want to do wells and septic?
Well, they can come back and apply if there is sewer and water available.
I think, what I'm hearing, the direction from the planning commission, you just want us to assume that this is going to be a well and septic project.
Right.
Is that accurate?
Unless, and if it changes, they can come back and reapply.
Right, that would be a whole new proposal.
Right. That's my perception of where it should go.
Then we would modify those utility conditions accordingly.
Okay, so you want to restate your motion?
So, I move approval of PC seven with removal of option A for the forty and fifty-foot lots, allowing only for the forty half-acre lots, and modification of all the conditions that's associated with that.
To make the appropriate change, right?
To make appropriate changes to all the conditions.
Okay, and that's, you're still the second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Not in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And motion carries.
Thank you all.
Five-minute break.
Yeah, let's see what's getting at the sewer.
Can you bring it up?
Yeah.
Just in case, just to make sure I can scroll.
I am presenting to you conditional use for 185-foot above-ground-level monopole wireless communication facility, which consists of a 180-foot actual tower with a five-foot lightning rod in an AR agricultural residential district. The applicants are Southern One LLC, Coral Towers LLC of Horizon Wireless. Future land use classification is RES1. Again stated, the zoning district is AR Agricultural Residential District. The proposal is for 185-foot above-ground-level monopole, 180-foot wireless communication facility with a five-foot lightning rod, suitable for the co-location of three additional carriers. So it will have a total of four carriers and it's, it is actually not on the northeastern portion of the property, so I apologize for stating that. I will show you where it is. It's kind of more towards 140 feet from the front property line is where the compound is being proposed. And the size of the compound is-
Can you hold on one minute?
Sure.
Could I ask you all to just go up in the hallway and discuss that, please? Could I ask you to step out in the hallway? There we go. Thank you.
So the facility is being proposed within a 6,400-square-foot fence compound area, which is located in north-central Pasco County in the North Market area and the northeast Pasco County rural area. And it's on the north side of St. Joe Road, approximately one-half mile west of Roberts Barn Road. It's generally where it's located in the county. This slide shows the existing zoning district, which is AR Agricultural Residential. Also, the zoning districts to the east and west are AR Agricultural Residential, as is the zoning district to the south. To the north, you have AC Agricultural Districts. The future land use classifications are RES1 to the east, to the west, to the south, with AG to the north. This slide shows the access and shows where the actual tower is being proposed within the property, which is approximately 140 feet from the property line facing St. Joe Road. So the access to the overall site is from St. Joe Road and it will be provided through a 30-foot access and utility easement on the property. This is the context map. There is not much context to provide, however, it is in your finding of fact, our trail map does show the Orange Belt Trail running along the western portion of the property. However, that information is inaccurate. We did check with the Trails Blue Ways folks and at this time, the Orange Belt Trail draft alignment does not run along the subject parcel. It actually, the draft alignment shows it about two miles east along Ramsey Road. This is the site plan showing the overall compound and to the right side, it shows what the monopole tower will look like with outside antennas. The Land Development Code requires applicants provide photo simulations of, basically, they float a balloon up in the air and then they transpose what the tower would look like on the property. So the first photo simulation is a view looking southwest, which is at the intersection of Ruffing Road and Roberts Barn Road. So it shows existing without the tower and proposed. You just see the top of the monopole. The second view is looking southwest from Ruffing Road, just north of St. Joe Road. And again, you know, with and without. And then the fourth view is looking southeast from Swift Road. The applicants held a neighborhood meeting earlier this year. And additionally, this application was reviewed by our consultant, OmniCom Consulting Group, and they recommended approval. So this item comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet from the Planning and Economic Growth Department. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Were there any objections at the neighborhood meeting?
So from what I can see from the neighborhood meeting, there weren't any objections. We did receive one letter of objection just recently, but the letter of objection, basically, I'm going to paraphrase it because I don't have it in front of me, but it says something to the effect of, hey, we would prefer that it be at the location that at some point in time, there was a proposal, which is off of Swift Road. To address that, in 2015, I did have some inquiries as to whether I had any applications for wireless communications facilities on Swift Road, and I never did. So there was never an application to be reviewed or commented on Swift Road, which is just due northwest of this location.
Any other questions for Denise?
Good afternoon. I'm Matt Tania-John, 935 Main Street, Suite C4, Safety Harbor, Florida 34695. Just as a point of order, I did request additional time for my presentation today.
Uh-huh. Okay.
As you heard, I come before you today with staff and county engineering consultant recommendations of approval for 185-foot-tall monopole-style communication tower upon parcel 302421, a block of four zeros, 01400, 0010, off of St. Joe Road. I'm showing you, in all maps I show you today, up will be north unless I state otherwise. I'm currently showing you a property appraiser aerial of the area around the parent parcel. And I have applied an orange arrow pointing to where the monopole would be located. In this map, you can see a line, you can see St. Joe Road moving, kind of zigzagging through, like, curving its way from east to west through the map as your primary landmark. And then, of course, you have the right-of-way for the old Orange Belt Railway off to the west. Roberts Vault Road is off, Roberts Barn Road is off to the east of me. And then you have Swift Road that was mentioned off to the west. This is a closer view. And as you can, I'm going to apply the arrow again just to show the approximate location. As you can see, the monopole will be located within Orange Grove on the parent property. This is part of an overall Orange Grove and Ranch property. And then, as you move out towards the houses that are further away, most of those are ranchette size on properties that have trees on near them. And then here's my closest aerial. My nearest house is located off to the west and it is 1.2 times tower height separation to the west. I've applied the orange arrow pointing to the approximate location of the monopole, the house you can see located off to my west. So to the north is the Orange Grove and then the ag buildings attendant to the Orange Grove and Ranch. And then you have wetlands on the parent parcel. To the south is our St. Joe Road, then a tree line, and then along the St. Joe Road right-of-way. Then you have pasture land and agricultural ranchettes. To the east are pasture lands owned by our landlord. Then you move into mature trees, as you can see, off on the east side. And then you move on to a property with a house. To the west are semi-wooded, is a vacant semi-wooded lot, and then you have a semi-wooded lot with a house on it. That was the one I mentioned before, that is 1.2 times tower height. Additional houses exist to the west on generally wooded land. As you heard, this parent parcel is zoned AR, with a future land use designation of residential six. And you can see the zoning on the parent parcel, you can see the zoning map from your Again, I've applied an orange arrow to where the tower would be located. And then this is residential one. Monopole-style communication tower is a tower like what I have shown here as an example. That is a tower with a single support pole, no guy wires or ironworks extending out from it, but it does have external antennas mounted on a headframe at the top. And those antennas are external because airflow is necessary to operate the antennas and radios. There are additionally computers at the base of the tower to help flow in it. This monopole will be completely dark at night. We have an FAA determination, no hazard to air navigation in the record, as well as F.D.O. concurrence. The base of the monopole being closed by the code required when in fence, it will employ fall zone technology, so in the unlikely event of structural failure, it will not collapse, but rather fold over upon itself and be completely contained within a 67-foot radius on the parent parcel. You have a signed and sealed fall zone little letter included with the original submittal folder. The monopole will host Verizon's antennas and be able to support antennas for up to three additional users to support co-location. Right now, what I am showing you is Sheet C1 from the plans, which applies the site plan line work over an aerial just to provide context. And you can see the monopole is located within the circle. The larger circle that you see there is the fall zone radius that I mentioned. And then you have your distances out to your nearest tower off to the southeast. You have houses off to the, you have your call-out to your house to the west. And that's that 1.2 times. This is Sheet C2, showing a closer view of the site plan line work without the, without an aerial behind it. And then this is Sheet C3, just showing that as the tower is designed above, so the compound is provisioned below, with a pad for Verizon, as well as space for three co-locators per your code. This is Sheet C4, showing the elevation sheet of the monopole. And you can see the tower extends up, the monopole extends up to 180 feet. And then there's a five-foot lightning rod at the top. Verizon will be located at the top of the monopole, and then there's three co-locations below. Coral has committed to make these co-locations available at market rates as required under your code. This is just Sheet C5, showing the code required opaque fence. You saw the photo simulations before, so I'm just showing them again. Roberts Road and Ruffing Road. You can see the monopole and the distance peeking above the tree line. Then we have Roberts, Roberts Road south of Roberts Vault, looking west, and you can see the upper half of the monopole is visible. This is the clearest view of the monopole. It's along St. Joe Road. As you can see, if, once I move off to the west of my parent parcel, I run into tree line along St. Joe Road. And then you can see from Swift Road and Lazy Lay Acres driveway looking to the southeast, and the monopole is fairly visible. Monopole of a dull gray finish. As you heard, it'll be completely dark at night. I held a neighborhood meeting on April 30, 2024. At least four members of the public show up. I did have one, my neighbor two, the west, questioned about property values. I also had some, I also answered some educational questions about safety and how cell towers work. There was also a potential previous, a previous potential landlord from an earlier iteration of this site circa 2015, 2016. They had a Christmas tree farm that's on Swift Road and Lazy Lay Acres. I was also asked if the tower would be like, say, the lattice tower that is located to the west on St. Joe Road. It's our handoff to the west. I'll go into that in my RF report, and it'll not, because this is a monopole design, so it doesn't have that open ironworks design, and it also won't be eliminated. Moving into my RF package. So I'm now showing you a map from Verizon's RF package. This was reviewed by your outside expert. And you can see on the map that there's a variety of, there's basically six blue dots. Those are existing, existing towers along the 301 corridor primarily, and along the I-75 corridor, with one on St. Joe Road and one down State Road 52. If this looks kind of familiar, last month, I came before you with a, with a tower up in the Blanton area. This is actually the planned south handoff for the gap area to the south of the Blanton You can see the coverage that's currently being provided by Verizon on those towers. And again, these towers have been, the way that these projects work, they try to adjust, optimize, and change out antennas on existing towers before they undertake the costs of, first, just seeing if there's an existing tower they can pull a building permit on and go on and solve the gap, and then ultimately coming through this zoning process. And I do apologize, they did apply a yellow dot on a cream-colored map. I cannot control my RF engineers on that regard, other color choices. And then you can see, and they applied a yellow dot on a green map, but you can see the proposed coverage. I've also applied a blue arrow up to the northeast for context, to show the Spring Valley Tower that was recently approved by the Board of County Commissioners. And then this is just a map showing the coverage that would be provided by the monopole in a vacuum. Obviously, these don't work in a vacuum, they work as a network. So I often give a story of my childhood, growing up in Old East 106 in Sarasota, and they could send music out one way from City Island, Sarasota, 40 miles. St. Pete to the north, Venice to the south. These towers have to be able to conduct two-way communications with what are essentially fancy walkie-talkies, whether that is your phone, your watch, or the tablet that I have in my purse right now that I use for work. So they have a much smaller area. And just like how with these lights up above, they have to be distributed around the room in order to evenly light the room, so must the towers be evenly distributed across a geographic area in order to provide coverage. And also, just to circle back to my previous comment, the other tower on St. Joe Road that I had mentioned before, that lattice tower is off to the west. To give additional context, if you go across I-75 and further off this map, you would get to the Snow Park, where Verizon was working on improving their network there too last You've heard my housekeeping. I would like to touch on 911 call statistics. In 2021, 83.9% of all 911 calls in Pasco County come from, came from cellular numbers. This shows that reliable wireless communications is no longer a luxury, it is a necessity. With that, I am available for any questions that you may have, and I reserve remaining time for rebuttal. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Questions from up here?
I do have one quick one for you, Ms. John. Looking at your property, the applicant owns both of those parcels there, the one that's got the trees on and then the one that's vacant next to it. Was there any consideration of possibly moving the tower further north on the property other than obviously the additional construction costs and utility costs to get there?
Of course. Matt Tania-John again. And part of the challenge with this site, though, I would respectfully submit that the most logical place to see a piece of infrastructure is along St. Joe Road instead of further back, for what it's worth. But the landlord has very tight control of this property. So for example, I'm going to move back to Sheet C1, I believe. And, nope, it's going to be Sheet C2. You can see that there's a driveway connection off to the east for the landlord's property. And originally, Coral had wanted to at least route a driveway there internally, and the landlord just won't allow it. The landlord is being very strict on the control of the property, unfortunately. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Not a question, more of a comment. I mean, just from this rural area and just having it that close, I just have a concern with that. There's a nice spot there in the middle of the property where it's a little bit unwooded, where I think would be a lot better. I know this is a rural area, it just seems very close. I think it's 147 feet to the road, so more of a comment.
Or along the same lines? Exactly.
Yeah. So, but are you saying, Ms. John, that you're restricted from moving in anywhere else on the property?
Correct.
And that is because of locational requirements or the owner of the property requirements?
That unfortunately would seem to be the owner of the property. If I were to try to shift to something like the north into this property, I'd start running into locational requirements for RF, because then you're talking shifts at .3, .4, .3 miles-ish in the more. But with this, I unfortunately just don't have imminent, don't have any-
Well, and that would make access a little bit more difficult as well, right? Because your only access to St. Joe, am I correct?
It would.
What are the trees that are on the property?
Those are orange trees.
They're oranges?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there anybody from the audience that would have questions? Yes, sir, if you could say your name and address, please?
Good afternoon. My name is John Terry, and my address is 34037 St. Joe Road, which is, you know, Dade City 33525. And it's right next to this 18-story tower they want to put up.
Are you to the west or to the east of the-
You're the one that's-
But it doesn't really matter.
300-some feet? 233 feet? Go away.
It's, well, we're right next to it. But anyway, I'm just against it for, you know, aesthetic reasons for the most part, because I don't, with all the building going on around here, I mean, if you lived here any length of time, and, you know, some of you guys have been around quite a while, so it's not like it was before, and I understand growth. But St. Joe Road is probably one of the, it's nicer roads coming out of, out of Dade City. And, you know, sticking that thing there is just, it's totally unnecessary. And, you know, they can, you can't put lipstick on a pig. I mean, the thing's ugly. There's nothing you could say that it's, you know, maybe it's not as ugly as some of the other ones that they've put up. Because that one beyond Charlie's Market, you know, that's an eyesore. And, you know, that's been there for years. But, anyway, I mean, that's, my biggest thing is just, it's just flat ugly. And I didn't really see anybody getting to the bottom of it. There was a fellow by the name of Jewels, that was, let's see, yeah, the Lazy Lay. You know, it was Jewel, Jewel Lay, and he didn't mind having this thing on his property. And that was off of Swift Road, but he said he threw out all the paperwork to it. He wasn't able to come here today. So he's unopposed to it. In fact, he was, he sounded kind of eager to get the thing built on his property. And their key's back, he's got 58 acres, it would be in a cow pasture. It's higher than where it is, where they're proposing on our land, or next to my land. And so I would think, you know, theoretically, coverage would be better for him. And it's not going to be flat on St. Joe Road.
Is he still doing that Christmas tree farm thing?
Pardon?
Is he still doing the Christmas tree farm?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe not as much as he used to, but he was the guy who used to have the fireworks, Jefferson.
Yeah.
Yeah. River Dade City fireworks. But anyway.
That's his property up here, right?
Yeah, it's, I'm not sure. I know he butts up against the, we just went over to his house and talked to him the other day. It does go up against the railroad, and he's got 58 acres. I think it's in separate parcels. Some of it's wooded, but yeah, it's in that general vicinity. It's within, the lawyer, Ms. Jan, told us-
So right up at the top, right at the very top there, where you see that thin area of trees?
I think it's down a little bit.
Yeah.
It's down here.
Is part, part of all that right there?
Yeah, it's more in that area.
I've been there many times.
And this is your property here?
Yeah, that's me. I don't want to get-
Okay. Is there anything else?
But, no, that's, I don't know what else I can say. But I would like for them to possibly research that, that old site on Swift Road. I sent a letter in, and it's been mentioned, but I didn't hear anybody saying, you know, hey, this is a good idea, you know, because I think it is. I don't know, maybe in closing, is anybody in here want to have an 18-story cell tower next to their house, raise your hand?
I guess it depends how much they're paying.
Right.
You got any questions for me?
I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Name is Benjamin Bluthen, 34031 St. Joe Road. I'm going to be, or Dade City, Florida, 33525.
Ben, you've been sworn, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If you look at where the tower is, there's three rectangle properties to the left of that. I own the first two of them, right next to the tower. So two questions for me. The lawyer keeps referring to the distance, right? It's one point two-
The fall, fall distance, you mean?
Yes, fall distance. So I, my home is currently on the second property to the west, but I own that other parcel. If I ever wanted to build on that parcel, would I be able to once the tower's built? And obviously, if I could not build, because now it's closer to that 1.2 falling distance, that's going to drastically reduce my property value. So I just, I don't know if you guys know that answer or-
Well, when she comes back, she's going to come back-
Well, I can answer that question. We don't have a requirement for distance from a house to a tower. You just have to meet the regular required setbacks for the structure.
And I think when they're talking about being able to build on it.
The falling, that it's designed that it falls on its own property, it doesn't fall on somebody else's property.
So the 1.2 is not from the house, but from the property line?
Yeah, it's the 1.2 multiple of the height of, total height of the tower. But the fall distance is at 67.1 feet, which is contained within the property.
Gotcha, okay. All right. So I thought that was 1.2 was to my house.
It's time for it in that 67-foot radius.
Okay. Second thing is, in the, the application that they submitted, it says that it doesn't reduce property value, but I Googled that and it says, you know, Realtor.com, or what is it, National Association of Realtors.com, says that it's going to reduce property value anywhere from 2% to 8%. So obviously, that's a concern for my, for myself. I got, my house is up for sale at the moment, so trying to sell that as they're putting a tower up is a concern. And then just also, it talks about, through the application, it mentions, sorry, give me a second. There we go. It says extensively buffered using the vegetation. But if you look at all the aerial pictures, neighbors have trees, I've got large trees, but the property itself doesn't have large trees, so it's, it's not really hidden once you drive past it. And then it also asks in the application for a, for a variance of not having vegetation. I guess the code requirement is that there's vegetation around the base of the tower, but it asks for a variance to not have the vegetation and just have a chain-link fence with, I guess, that green mesh. And so-
Go ahead, you still have time.
Yeah, I would just, I mean, obviously, I don't want the tower, but if it would be there, I would like to have the vegetation and all the other stuff to make it at least more appealing, again, as I'm trying to sell my home, so.
Okay, that's great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Anyone else? All right, Ms. John, would you like to give some response to those concerns?
Matt Tania-John again. And may I please have a remote control? All right, so just to move through, as was observed, the fall zone technology means that this will be completely contained on the parent parcel. The 1.2 times tower height was the separation from the nearest residential structure. I think I did something to the PowerPoint, and I apologize for that. So just to circle back, in my, in my analysis that I provided to my applicant's narrative that runs through your code, I discussed the fact that as you move away from the parent parcel, and you get to the properties that the code is truly trying to protect, right? Those properties all have intervening, intervening vegetation, mature tree canopy that helps buffer from the parent property. Now, it is true that if you were to somehow move the monopole from the orange grove off into the field, you know, you would remove some buffering from the base of it, because you would move it out into the middle- because you'd move it out into the middle, and then all you would have would be the planted landscape buffer. If you are concerned about property values, um, I would respectfully request, if that is something that you feel prevents you from reaching a recommendation of approval today, I'll be happy to request a continuance and bring a property appraiser in to perform an analysis under generally accepted standards of the appraisal profession and testify to you if you so wish. Uh, we, uh, to the extent that we requested a variance, what we requested was a waiver to allow the existing orange trees to be used as, uh, landscape buffer. Uh, that was the intent or the attempt of it. To that extent, um, we are, the space is provided, and to the extent that we asked it, we said that if the county doesn't feel, uh, that they want to give it, we will provide the code-required landscape buffer. And again, space is reserved for that. Uh, to move on to Lazy Lay Acres, you're talking a property that is roughly .4 miles away to the northwest. So, again, if you'd like to hear, um, and, uh, this is Lazy Lay Acres, and I just mapped to the center of their property, but you're talking a range of .4, 5 miles, so it's a pretty big range. If you'd like Verizon, if you feel that you need Verizon to opine on that in order to reach a recommendation of approval, we, of course, will be happy to request a continuance. Uh, but, again, I would respectfully submit, that's a big move for a cell tower, and you basically moved the coverage footprint .4, 5 miles to the northwest. Touching on my neighbor to the west, and you're going to have to take this being area with a grain of salt, because these trees that are immediately behind the house are no longer there. Those have been cut down. But, again, you have trees along the property line on that neighboring lot there that are, that provide additional partial buffering. I can't make it invis, I can't make it invisible. I don't have the Ronan cloaking device, unfortunately, because then I would have no student loans. But, again, to the extent that is within my power as an applicant and within the bounds of the design, the developing world, that the, within the bounds of sound planning, we do believe that this is, this meets the requirements and essence of your code and is proper for recommendation of approval. I'm available for any questions you may have.
So, I would assume there's a particular radius where you have to look, uh, in order to provide its coverage that Verizon has given, given you? And then you survey properties within that radius? Does that, does that sound right?
That is correct.
Okay, so, and, so the, what other pro, uh, properties have you talked to? There's no other properties that were willing to locate this in their property within that radius? Or, can you speak on that?
I know that this ring, this, this search area, you know, goes back, has a lot of history in that it goes back to that 2015, 2016 time. I know that the site acquisition agent has had a very hard time finding properties in this area because they run into the problem that you have a few large property owners who, if they say no, you're out of the running, and then the smaller property owners are just too small to meet the requirements of your code. Uh, so that's what's been told to me. Again, if you want direct testimony from the site acquisition agent, I can bring them in.
I mean, honestly, uh, you know, I tend to defer to the residents in that area that, you know, enjoy their lifestyle and so forth, and, and I think they're generally concerned about how a tower's affect the value of the property. I think that has some credibility being in the real estate business. And, uh, I don't think it's out of the question to, um, uh, request, uh, time, for you to request a continuance and then do a, do a, do a search, a research on the, uh, on the, uh, Christmas tree farm area to see if that's a possibility. I think we need to make every effort to accommodate the neighbors in that area where we can. You know, I'm more inclined to inconvenience Verizon than I am the resident. So, I think that's, I think that's what we're trying to do, is, is protect the residents with the knowledge that we, these towers, we need. We all have phones, so we know we need towers. And probably going to need them more in the future because of emergencies and potential emergencies. So, I'm all in favor of the tower. I just want to make sure we give every consideration to people living in that area. And I think the board members will agree with that. As far as the appraisal, I'm not sure we need to go to that distance, but I'll leave that up to my colleagues here to, to decide what motion they want to make, that, just laying it out to you the way I'm seeing it right now.
Yeah, I think those effects definitely diminish further, uh, the proxent, or further distance you got between the tower and that nearest neighboring parcel. But, yeah, I'm, I'm concerned, too, with the gentleman who came up to speak that has an immediate neighboring, neat, immediate neighboring parcel to the west there. That's going to be very close proximity to that tower. You know, it's generally a rural area with a lot of other potential spots that might fall into that radius that still meets the service coverage needs. So, you know, I'd like to, to see that those, all those options have been exhausted prior to locating, you know, within a hundred, a couple hundred feet of, uh, a neighboring residence.
Yeah, I think alternative locations, I mean, if we're looking at alternative sites in the neighborhood. I mean, Mr. Stanolo and I offered a couple ideas of alternative areas on the subject property that might be, uh, more preferable, too. So I think, I mean, with, with all that, if you're looking for a motion, make it continuance. I'll make the motion to continue this.
I think you should ask the applicant how long they need to provide the information that you've asked for.
This is Matt Sinai, John. Uh, we'll be happy to run those to ground for you, and I would request a continuance of 60 days.
Okay.
Okay. We, is there a need to meet back in Dade City?
Well, is there a Dade City meeting of 60 days from now?
Yes, so that would be August 8th would be the Dade City meeting approximately 60 days from now.
Okay, then I'll make the motion to continue PCA 60 days. To which, which meeting was that, sorry?
August 8th, 2024, 1:30 in Dade City.
August 8th, 2024 in Dade City.
I'll second.
With, with the providing of...
Was that the 1:30?
Yes, sir.
Same time.
Same time.
So I think you should be clear which the applicant did mention a different... Did you want the RF engineer? Did you want their site selection expert? Did you want their appraiser?
I told you what I wanted, but...
Did you want all three? And probably should get some direction as to what you want.
I definitely like to hear for site selection, so that's, that's my...
I'd be more interested in the site selection issue personally.
Right. I'd, I'd say the site selection engineer, uh, site selection person and the RF engineer. To just that the, uh, moving that, because I mean, it honestly, on some of the RF diagrams that you have, it looks like it might even be better shifting it more to the north. So, yeah, I think it'd be valuable to, to have the RF engineer, too.
Understood. I will see you in 60 days with my site acquisition team, uh, with my site acquisition agent and my RF engineer.
There we go.
Did we get a second? Yeah, we only have this one.
I assume we vote on that?
Apologies.
I'll second that motion, yeah.
I wish all when Chris makes the motion, we don't have to vote. We have a second?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, like, sign. Motion carried.
Thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Amy Toll with Planning Services. The item that you'll hear today is CPAS 2404 in the name of Ed's Food Truck. This is a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, changing from RES6 residential, six dwelling units per gross acre to COM commercial to allow for the development of a food truck park. Um, the subject site is located on the south side of State Road 54, approximately 200 feet west of Shelley Lane. There is an accompanying rezoning to C1 to allow for this use to occur. Subject site is in the South Market area and Urban Service area, as shown on the county location map. The context map shows the subject site. It is south of State Road 54. As you can see, it is in proximity of the Saddle Burke Amputee and Stony Burke Amputee. And there is an existing trail segment that's a five-foot sidewalk on the south side of State Road 54. Here's your aerial view. The existing future land use of RES6. Proposed future land use of commercial. These are the comprehensive plan, um, policies that the proposed amendment is consistent with. And with that, we recommend you find the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and approve to the Board of County Commissioners. And I can be happy to answer any questions you might have on this one.
So, are you...
Any questions?
Is the purpose of this COM plan amendment in that if one wants to operate a food truck, that they have to have commercial, ultimately, commercial zoning? Or, why are we attempting to amend the COM plan?
Yeah, so, um, initially, they actually came in with a code violation. Um, so this was an attempt to remedy the code violation. They have moved all the trucks off-site for now as to remedy essentially the code violation. Um, but yes, the C1 zoning district is where the food trucks would be permitted.
I think Commissioner Moody's question, though, is, like, because there are some food trucks that just...
Show up.
Show up.
Right.
The difference that this is a, these are food trucks that are designated spaces, that are staying there permanently?
Correct, yeah, it'll be essentially like a food truck park, or, uh, what is it called, a court?
They're permanently staying at this location.
Correct.
They're not going all over the county and survey.
Correct, yes, correct.
And that's why they have a part commercial?
Correct.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, they were, they were staying in place.
I'll have others, but I want to hear from the applicant first.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chairman Gray. My name is Jessica Kowal with Landis-Evans and Partners. I'm representing the applicant today. My address is 8103, or, sorry, 3810 North Hill Boulevard in Tampa, and I have it sworn. I'm not going to go through my presentation. Amy did a fantastic job of highlighting all the requirements and all of the applicable policies in the COM plan. I just want to clarify something about the applicant. Because there was a food truck on a neighboring parcel, a couple of parcels down from this one, the, uh, property owner assumed that he could do the same. Um, the code enforcement violation was actually because one of the food truck operators started to construct a, a structure for shade. Those structures have been removed. There is no permanency of these trucks. There's not going to be, um, any structures to hold the trucks down. There is the possibility that at the end of the night, they will roll off the site. There is the possibility that they will go to other locations. The property owner simply wants the opportunity to have trucks on his site to help generate funds to offset the property taxes. It's my understanding that this COM plan amendment and rezoning is required because the site is currently vacant. There is no existing infrastructure to ensure that the parking and access and utilities will be provided for any patrons visiting the site. So this COM plan, as well as the C1 zoning that will come for you later, is mainly to permit that use as a right, rather than what we see in other parts of the county where there are developed sites and food trucks can just roll up onto those sites. I'll reserve the rest of my time for questions.
Just a quick question. So, are, is there plans for the trucks to always be mobile and if, or self-sustaining, I guess is the best, best way of wording that? In other words, there's no plans for any kind of hookups of water, sewer, electricity? And the electricity hookups, kind of like an RV, uh, type setup?
That is the intent. However, the code provisions do require us to connect, and we still have to provide facilities for visitors on the site. So the intent is to, there is a water hookup already on the site. There used to be a mobile home there, but...
So can you backtrack a minute and just educate me a little bit about the code provisions? What, what, what exactly is required? What, what does our code require for a food truck park? It's not something I'm familiar with.
Yeah, so it's in 402.5, .8.5, it basically states that, uh, folks can have a permanent site, um, non-residential, so it calls out in the code which districts are allowable for that, C1, C2, I1, I2, C3, um, et cetera. So it also states that at a minimum, uh, a food truck court, which is basically a permanent location for food trucks. I mean, ti, different types of food trucks can come in and out, but generally, they would have like a pad where they would come in. Um, they have to provide restroom facilities, drinking fountains, trash and recycling receptacles, uh, shade and seating, and they have to go through the PSP process. So that's what the code says.
So there's...
And they would also be subject to mobility fees and combat and rescue fees.
And they would be permitted to install electrical hookups for the truck?
Correct, yes.
Food, uh, water and sewage hookups for the...
That is correct.
Required to have restrooms and...
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions before you sit down?
I've got a couple.
Okay.
How many trucks would be on site?
Right.
Approximately?
Maximum five.
Okay. And can you put an arrow up there? Oh, it's included. Just curious, as far as parking, and if people might park next door at that strip center, and that's going to cause a problem?
It is possible. It's not easily accessible from that site. There's about a two and a half to three-foot drop in the site, and the existing office park has put somewhat of a small retaining wall up to help keep the elevation changes in place. Of course, there is the opportunity to do so. When I was posting the public hearing sign, I actually did park there, mostly because of safety concerns of not being able to get into this particular site. The access that I had to traverse was back onto the sidewalk that is on the south side of 54.
And when they have to get a preliminary site plan approval, that includes all the landscaping and buffering and anything else that would be applicable, you know, if I were to build a regular restaurant?
That's absolutely correct.
Denise, how do you count the number, or number of parking spaces for...
I would have to look at another one that was just recently approved to see how they counted it. I think they may have just used like the square footage, um, and then under like restaurant, because there was a total square footage of the, uh, the seating area that was included, because they had an actual pavilion and seating area, uh, for the, for the patrons.
I guess you use the number of seats basically as an...
Yes.
Okay.
And are they required to hook up to utilities here? In other words, do they need to have sewer service?
I believe...
You say, you said they have to have bathrooms. Does that mean they have to have porta-potties? Or does that mean they have to have a permanent restroom building hooked up to a sewer or permitted septic system, or...
If you give me a second, I'm looking to, in the code section, to see if it specifically states or not. Yeah. It just says provide for restroom facilities. It doesn't specify whether those restroom facilities are par de l'aise or they're actual restrooms. My understanding, and I'll, I'll look back to the last one that was approved, they actually did provide, you know, true restroom facilities. It wa, it wasn't par de l'aise. These were permanent facilities.
Yes, it is. Similar to how you would go to a public park, and there would be some restrooms there for you with a little fountain outside. That is the intent. It's my understanding that there's certain amounts of, um, ERUs, equivalent residential units that are drawn, um, depending on your project's demands, and that is what triggers in proximity to the existing water lines and sewer lines of county requirements to connect. We have them adjacent to our property. So, the intent is to connect.
They have gravity or force mains who are out here?
There's a private force main on the office park parcel, and I believe there's a gravity line, but we might have to, uh, I don't know exactly where in State Road 54 it is. It might be on the north side. But, I'm not certain, I'm not that...
All right, I see.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, sir. I know you've been patiently waiting. Come right up and give us your name and address.
I'm Dale Weaver. I live in Land O' Lakes. I got property on Shelley. And there's a lot of unanswered ques... Paper?
Can you state your address for the record?
4124 Alpine Road, Land O' Lakes, 34639.
Thank you, sir.
Lot of questions on it is, one of the biggest ones, that all the neighbors off of Shelley here, there's only one way in and one way out. And if you blow that up on Shelley and 54... And if you blow that up on Shelley and fifty-four. Okay, now you see, there's only one. You just don't go. And they want more people. More trucks. But getting out on fifty-four is a very big problem for everybody back there from Benjamin, Shelley, all of them people. And they keep building more commercial stuff on the right to do that and they got another empty one there. But what I'm saying also is this property going to be elevated? Where's the drainage going? Every place is built nowadays is supposed to have a drainage for your own place. And you've got machines there. It's got gasoline and oil dripping and they drive in and drive out if there's a storm or whatever. And then you've got an oil buildup. Okay, then when it rains, that's a low section anyway. We get a lot of water. And it don't go no place. And like I said, the traffic only goes one way. You cannot get anywhere off that whole white line all the way across and all the way to Shelley. It is so hard to get out on that road. When they built it, why they put a, a turn lane thing on this side, it should have been when you got in. So you could hide from the traffic, you know, to get back out.
Alright.
Now, is these units going to be running on, uh, generators, noises all the time? It, it's like a junkyard RV park. It's not going to be good. Because people makes mess. The mess blows all over the neighborhood and you're picking it up.
But we're not here today approving a food truck park. We're being asked to change the future land use of the property to commercial. I'm sorry, it's residential today. And I'm trying to think. Not sure it's a pleasant experience to be a resident fronting on State Road fifty-four at that locations. So it seems to me like a logical place to put commercial development along State Road fifty-four, but I want you to understand, we're, we're not being asked to approve a food truck park. I think that's the applicant's intent and even if this land use change is approved today, that doesn't guarantee he's going to get a permit to build a food truck park. The, the questions that you're asking are all things that happen later in the process. If, if we were to approve this land use change today, the next thing they have to do is come in and ask for a zoning change. Then after they get the zoning change, then they have to go get this site plan approval, construction plan approval. They've got to get access permits from the DOT and I will tell you that I'm looking at this aerial photograph and I can see why you say the ac- the access is dysfunctional. It looks like a very dysfunctional attempt at the Texas T, but, um, you know, that's something that the Florida Department of Transportation will address.
How many trucks?
When and if they get to the next step. So I don't want to say that we're not hearing your concerns. I'm saying that your concerns are maybe somewhat premature. That's all.
How many, how many trucks are you talking about?
Well, I think she said five for the moment as, as the maximum, but we're not, again, I want you to understand, they're not asking us to approve a food truck park here today. They're asking us just to change the generalized allowable uses on the property from residential to commercial. This guy could sell it, decide he doesn't want to jump through all these hoops and build a food truck park. And maybe he sells it to somebody who wants to build an office building or a, a restaurant or a s- a convenience store or something like that, so.
Well, you've got another lot empty right there on Shelley and fifty-four. Now, if that becomes one of them too, you still got more problems. But you've got all these people. All the vendors, they've got to go to the bathroom and use water someplace.
Again.
Is it going to be an RV?
I'm not disagreeing with you. I have these very same concerns. That's why I have questions for the staff and when we get to the whole zoning questions, I'm going, probably going to have a whole bunch more about this, but this is the big broad brush picture of, of land use in the area, not the specific use of the food trucks.
When, when did they start selling property for that, for mobile? Instead of for a restaurant?
Well, if, if we were to approve this, I don't know whether we're going to or not, but if we were, this could be sold for a restaurant. Or at least it's got the first hurdle to be sold as for a restaurant. It could be sold as a retail store. Could be sold as an office.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't have to be a food truck park.
Yeah. Okay, but like I said, fifty-four is my big concern.
Yeah, I, and I see from the aerial photograph, I one hundred percent agree with you and I understand your concern.
There's a lot of people there.
It looks like a mess.
Yes. I appreciate all of you. Thank you much.
Thank you for coming, yep. Of course, this is the way, the way it stands with this applicant. He really has no access to Shelley Lane anyway.
Correct.
Right. And I agree, he's, his people are not going to probably be able to make a left turn and go westbound out of fifty-four without going down the road, a long way to make another UE. You're not going to make it in there. Yeah, I mean that's. Hopefully the DOT will fix that mess. Not that uncommon, actually. I wouldn't want to be the guy caught in the median trying to make the left turn out of Shelley.
Kamikaze across that, yeah, that's, that's pretty crazy.
That looks like an accident waiting to happen.
But generally, I, I think, uh, commercial makes a lot more sense than rez six for a future maybe.
I agree.
Yeah, certainly.
Yeah, I would agree. I think this would be a miserable place to be. A residential land use. Okay, well, that being the case, do we have anybody else that wants to speak on this? If not, then let's have a motion.
I'll move approval, uh, item PC nine.
One second.
You have a motion and a second? Any further discussion of the motion?
Just that I won't be, oh God, I'm sorry.
When they bring this back for the rezoning, just heads up, the questions that I'm going to be asking are does this make any unfair advantage to those who invest in real? It doesn't sound like it based on the requirements. But I don't want to create a situation where all of a sudden we have a proliferation of food truck parks because I can go around all of the requirements that somebody who's in the restaurant business has to comply with. So.
Agreed.
But it sounds to me like you're already a step ahead of us on that, so. Okay.
I'm just going to add that I'm not voting on this just because it's not a residential use. That's all, just for the record.
Okay.
Unless there's a tie.
Okay, so, uh. Well, see, this would be less impact on the school. It is residential today.
Exactly, yeah, you're taking it up.
Was that Chris I just heard?
Alright, so all in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Okay. Are we out of trouble? Yeah, okay.
For the, for the day.
Are your motion to adjourn?
Motion, yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much and thank you, staff. You did an awesome job as usual. David. I can't say enough about you. And Jessica? Whoever built the burglar, because I saw the pictures in the report.